Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the Live Meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudene, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Ham? Mm-hmm, present.
Present.
Commissioner Hickey?
Present.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Vice Chair Simmons?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
We are joined on the staff end this evening by Community Development Director David Loia. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please? Seeing no one here in the gallery, David, do we have anyone waiting to join us digitally? Okay, appreciate that, and we will now move on to item three, which is our consent calendar. We have one item on consent this evening, which is to approve Planning Commission minutes from our regular meeting December ten, two thousand and twenty four, five thirty P. M. Would any commissioner like to pull this item for discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve of a consent calendar.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We had, moving on now to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, which is Adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PC two five dash zero one, recommending City Council adoption of ordinance number one five seven five, density bonus, and inclusionary zoning land use code text amendments. Can we begin with the staff report?
Uh, yeah, I will keep my staff report very brief because the Planning Commission has reviewed this with council several times in the past. Uh, but just for process piece, the Planning Commission must review legislative actions that the City Council takes, make a recommendation before they do. That's what this item is about. And this item would be to add or update our density bonus chapter, which is currently out of compliance with state law, to bring it in compliance with state law, and to re-adopt inclusionary zoning, which was previously amended out of the code. Uh, the terms for inclusionary zoning were based on the terms outlined by council at your last study session. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's really all I have to update the commission on at this point.
Got it. Thanks for that, uh, David. And just to clarify, this will close the loop on conversations we've been having about inclusionary zoning and density bonus over numerous meetings over the past year, and there is nothing new in this proposed ordinance. At this point, I'd just like to see if there are any clarifying questions from commissioners for staff, reserving more detailed questions and comments for later. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Um, staff, I have a question about page six of thirty-five in the, uh, fourth paragraph down or fifth. Based on previous review, the Planning Council, which was that supposed to be, the City Council or Planning Commission?
Yeah, I believe that's supposed to be the, um...
That's the last, sounds like, uh...
Yeah, probably the Planning Commission, but I mean, the council did make that recommendation. But yeah, I believe it's supposed to be the Planning Commission in that sentence.
Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Okay. And then further on in that same paragraph, there's a statement in the report. If developers find more benefit with the local inclusionary zoning versus the state density bonus law, the community benefits, the community benefits by having more local control over the design and features. That seems to be the kind of quintessential statement of this packet. I'm feeling like that would be a point of discussion. Are we trying to find the line right there? The, you know, I know that we've gone back and forth on the balance between, uh, density bonus and inclusionary zoning and, um... I, I'm just wanting us to be clear, if that's our goal, that we're trying to emphasize the, the usage of inclusionary zoning over density bonus because it gives us more local say. Is that roughly where staff is at on this?
Yeah, I think that's...
I'd like a, just a quick answer from staff, and then I do want to take public comment, and then we'll bring it back and talk about this at length.
Yep.
Yeah, um, yeah, that is, that is approximately true. That's the quickest answer I can give.
That's fair.
And we can get into more detail about it when we get back to deliberations.
Any other quick clarifying questions for staff before we take public comment? Okay, thank you. I'm going to open public comment. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. Joanne, good evening.
Greetings. My name's Joanne McGary. It's been a while since I've been here. There's new people, new faces on this commission. I'm an old face. Um, I first want to say in terms of procedure or process, I've been to some, um, city meetings primarily in Eureka where they've done a switch and let they have people on Zoom speak first and then those of us in the audience. So sometimes for people like me who don't have as much information as people on Zoom might have, it benefits me to hear what they have to say first. Um, but who knows who's on Zoom, if anybody. But that being said, um, I appreciate trying to come into compliance with, with the state mandates on a density bonus thing. I'm really trying to wrap my head around all these things, and I just want, especially for some of the new people, especially the women here, to hear from me, is that, um, I'm currently living on a subsidy that the City of Arcata has offered to renters that qualify. Um, and I totally appreciate that program. It's for low-income, very low-income people so that they can afford to stay living in Arcata where they want to live. You know, I've been told I should move to Eureka, um, but I don't want to. I want to live in Arcata. And so inclusionary zoning sounds great. I've got twenty-nine seconds, but, um, three percent, six percent, I can't remember, but there's a lot of people like me who really benefit by having safe, sane, and affordable. I call it those three things. It's not just affordable housing. It's safe and sane for thriveability for the future. So when we're talking about all of this, just remember that Arcata can add the safe and sane with the affordable, and let's do inclusionary zoning, uh, first.
Thank you so much for your comments. Joanne, is there anyone waiting to join us online? Okay. Back to the discussion for the commission. I would love to hear what people are thinking. I do want to just reemphasize that we've talked about this a lot, and this is the result of direction from the City Council. So, uh, happy to entertain the discussion. Dan, I know you had, uh, concerns about the density bonus, uh, versus inclusionary zoning. Peter, I know you had something to add, so happy to pick this discussion up, um, and, and see where it leads us.
I think I was just trying for the group to reflect back on the state that we're at, you know? This is kind of the rub, finding the balance between these two, uh, options for builders. And I think we all felt pretty good about where we're at, and I just want to make sure that we still do.
Got it. Thank you for that. Peter, I know you wanted to speak, so please.
I do. Um, I, I think, um, I think clearly we need more housing in Arcata. And I speak, um, I see my colleagues at the university having to live in McKinleyville or Eureka because they can't find housing that they can afford in Arcata. One of our colleagues here just bought a house in Eureka. So we, we need housing that's inclusionary, but we need housing that is suitable for sort of the mid-level professionals that are abandoning Arcata because they can't live here. So it's not just people like Joanne that need housing here. It's people that work at the university, work at the city, work at the other professional organizations that we have in Arcata, and we're suffering a real brain drain because we don't have housing for those kinds of people. The second thing I want to say is, I just don't, I think we're kidding ourselves that a developer would choose our inclusionary zoning instead of the state density bonus law. I think there's a great advantage to choosing the state density bonus law. The difference between those limits and the limits we've set for inclusionary zoning are trivial. And I don't think any developer would choose our inclusionary zoning. So based on those two important reasons, I think we should just ditch temporarily the inclusionary zoning in our city. And we can always go back and revisit that and include it if we need to. But I think we need housing, we need housing for all these different kinds of people. And I think any impediment we put, uh, in front of developers to develop housing is counterproductive at this point. So I would say we should tell the City Council, just ditch the inclusionary zoning temporarily. But that's what I think.
I just want to say that I support that.
I'd like to hear from other commissioners. Anyone else have thoughts or opinions on the inclusionary zoning component and Peter's take on this? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the city needs like a cross-section of strategies for developing additional housing, including affordable housing for very low income all the way to middle-income, uh, professionals, as you reference here. I think the development of housing is critical. I think the city could work towards subsidizing that. But I don't see inclusionary zoning as an impediment to development. I think it is one of many factors and features. I think it has its own flaws. I think what we want to avoid is any sort of, um, luxury housing developments here. And I think what inclusionary zoning tends, or intends to do is include some low-income housing in more of these luxury developments, which I don't think Arcata's really that market. But I think we need, we need affordable units, and I think including them in the development of the up-and-coming housing that folks are thinking about, um, is going to be helpful.
Thank you. Go ahead, Amanda.
Can I ask questions to staff?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. So I think, first of all, real doozy of a first meeting here, guys, just waiting through this, but I just wanted to check my understanding on a couple of things. So, um, the way I read it, um, the density bonus provides an incentive, whereas the inclusionary zoning is more of a mandate, correct? And, um, the standards seem similar to me, um, to Peter's point. So I was just curious, David, in terms of the development that's gone up recently, while these things were lapsed or, right? How many, just on, I guess, the impetus of the developer, already contained low-income, moderate-income units as part of their design?
Yeah, today we haven't had a developer come forward and voluntarily, um, have units that are restricted to an income level. There's, in our community, kind of two types of developments. There's market rate development, and then there are developers who focus on affordable housing. That affordable housing is oftentimes very expensive because of the regulations around, uh, funding those types of projects for, for starters. Secondly, the idea of re-implementing inclusionary zoning came from the concept that it would be a way to disperse affordable housing throughout the community so that you don't know that the person walking out of the building is a low-income household. So it was to, to try and arrive at a, a mixed-income community. And then I think, thirdly, it was kind of this, uh, bulwark against, um, uh, you know, gentrification. Uh, in particular, there were fears in the, the gateways, uh, area that, uh, folks that live there now wouldn't be able to live there in the future. And so it was a way to ensure that, um, the future development includes houses that are affordable to the entire community. But you're, you're absolutely right in terms of the difference between the requirement, inclusionary zoning triggers. Uh, currently, it's written that it would trigger at thirty units, a development of thirty units or more. And it would be required that the developer would provide some amount of affordable housing, uh, if they hit that trigger, whereas density bonuses is voluntary.
Sorry, one, one last quick question, and then when it comes to, you know, did get to hear the report out on our arena numbers, which was really impressive, but, um, just curious your opinion, would this help us stay on track to delivering on those goals?
That is a complicated, complicated question. I could, you know, tell you that, looking back in history, we've always done a really good job of, um, being competitive for affordable housing projects, and we've done a really good job of meeting our arena. You know, right now, uh, you know, looking at least in the next couple of years into the future, I don't know what the funding landscape is going to look like for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Matt, Abby, thoughts on inclusionary zoning in our previous discussions and current?
Previously, I feel like a lot of, in our discussions, we've been talking about how, like, we don't know how this is going to play out. It's going to take time for us to see, and, and maybe people do choose the, like, I, I have a hard time removing it because we don't know what's going to happen. And it's, and I think, you know, as we've discussed before, like, we can always change or go back and amend this. And so, I don't know, if the greater half of this commission feels like it should be removed, I would, I would be supportive of that, but I'd like to hear more discussion, really.
Yeah, so I, I feel both wings of this argument pretty strongly. And I think the research that I've looked at that showed that inclusionary zoning hindered development was usually inclusionary zoning set at a much higher rate than we sort of, in our negotiations previously, decided to set it at. And so my hope would be that this sort of compromise, lower rate that we set ours at, will avoid some of that hindrance to development that you're concerned about, Peter. And then I also think that, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to acquire it so much that we get to that point. And so this compromise that we reached over previous conversations was sort of my hope that we could be in between these two, I think, legitimate sides to this argument. And so I, my vote would be to just sort of keep what we had previously set. You know, wait a year and see what kind of development gets proposed, and then we can reassess based on that.
One question I have is, um, given the fact that there's a sense that a developer may choose the density bonus versus inclusionary numbers, doesn't that mean that the inclusionary mandate won't be a hindrance to building, given that there's another option?
It seems to me, yes, they could choose the, the density bonus instead of the inclusionary zoning. But they could include, they, they could choose none of them. As we've been discussing, the density bonus is voluntary. And if there's no inclusionary, uh, in the, in the inclusionary zoning isn't. So if somebody's building a thirty-two-unit apartment complex, they've got to, uh, either do inclusionary zoning or the state density, and I think they would choose the state density. But if the inclusionary zoning weren't there, they could, they could do neither. And I think, in that sense, inclusionary zoning is somewhat of an obstacle to development. That, that's all I'm saying. I, uh, one more comment. I'd like to respond to what Ashton said about luxury apartments. I, I just don't think that's a problem in Arcata. I, you know, hedge fund managers aren't moving here. We're, I, I don't think we're in danger of having, you know, fancy luxury apartments that no one here can afford. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. If, if we, if an application came in for a luxury apartment, it would be the first, and we would all be surprised. And it would remind us perhaps, like, wow, there is that other market here. Maybe we need to add some inclusionary zoning back in, or, you know, maybe we need to revisit this. I'm reflecting back on, it's been five weeks or so since we really chewed on this. And part of the sentiment then was, um, amongst this commission was, or at least part of the discussion, was, uh, if we didn't have inclusionary zoning, might more projects actually get built? And let's, let's see if that happens. If it does, and it's a problem because they're not hitting the right part of the market, based on our opinion, we can always revisit. It's easy to add those teeth back in. I talked to staff about what it takes, and I think it was two meetings that you described, one from City Council or one from, I forget which who first, but it was like two meetings. You know, maybe five or six weeks if we wanted to revisit this at any time. So it's not like a done deal. No projects are in the works right now. No big projects in the gateway area. You know, people aren't kicking down the door to build these things. So, um, it feels to me, after all this effort to create a development, development opportunity, that it would be really nice to see what happens, what the momentum is, and then discuss adding more structure to it, you know?
I also, um, want to remind us that we, in our joint meeting with the City Council, were able to bring that inclusionary unit threshold, you know, shift that back to the original place that the, yeah, that the commission felt more comfortable with. I still feel now the way, my position on this hasn't changed, which is to say, I appreciate everyone's perspective. I think, I think we're all trying to aim in the right direction and I still feel like we need to see some construction and some projects to figure out what's going to happen. And as Dan said, we can, we can turn the dial in the future if we feel like we're getting not enough or getting too much of something, but in a, we're like in a data vacuum here and just kind of talking cir, in a, in a circle. I appreciate all the points, but I feel like we just need to get some, get some work done and, and then revisit. So.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think, I'm curious to understand the procedure here. Are you suggesting that because this hasn't been like adopted, that there's a holdup on any sort of development potential?
No, that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm saying is we've been talking about this a lot. And like, I think we're all passionate about seeing good housing be built in Arcata. I think that's the through thread that ties everyone's concerns here together. So like, sitting and listening to everyone, I, I hear us all moving in the same direction with, with variations on what we think the best way to get there is. What I'm suggesting is that at a certain point, continuing to talk about it has diminishing returns.
Yeah.
Which is, in my opinion, where we are now. And that what would be helpful would be, I feel like we've done a lot of tweaking. We've gone back and forth with the city council. We've revisited this a number of times. What I'm suggesting is, let's leave it like it is. Let's see some projects get built.
Yeah.
Because that is what's really going to tell us what this density bonus versus inclusionary zoning is really going to translate into when it comes to actual housing production, not theoretical. And once we see some projects get built, as Dan was saying, we've talked about this repeatedly, we can then say, okay, two, three, however many projects have been built, let's look at them. What happened? Here's what we hoped. What actually happened? Let's, let's review it as a planning commission. And if at that point we say, wow, that's not what we thought was going to happen, we can pretty easily turn the dial and shift these numbers to steer the course of housing production in the direction that we were hoping for. But we may find, wow, this is working fine. What I'm saying is, absent some real, actual housing production, we're just kind of in a vacuum, talking about what we think's going to happen.
Totally. Yeah, I think that's great. And I think the 30-unit threshold is an interesting one. I think from kind of an overall, I mean, it really depends on the site. But, you know, in a lot of the projects I've worked on, I've used the state density bonus as ways to get more housing and get away with certain other, you know, parking limits and et cetera, et cetera. I think it's, the state density bonus is useful in many ways. But I am very curious how that limit of 30 units to trigger the inclusionary zoning would affect this community and potential development, which I know, you know, there's not a ton of sites available for that many units. And so I am curious what developers will come to the city for that kind of project and if we will get any sort of feedback around this causing any sort of deterrent, because at this point, I think it's really hard to tell. And my understanding is that this commission and council and city kind of has a priority towards affordable housing. And so I would really urge us to kind of put, put language towards that and implement something like this and see where it goes. And yeah, try to make some tweaks after the fact.
Yeah. And, and of course, if a developer does choose the density bonus, that's good news for housing production, right? And so I don't think that that's, I, I don't, I think inclusionary zoning not keep being used isn't, isn't necessarily a bad thing at all. Go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that point, Scott. When you said leave it as it is, you mean adopt, you know, bring the density bonus into the compliance with what the state language is, hold off on the inclusionary zoning, collect data on what's going to happen over the next year and revisit it? Was that?
No, I'm saying leave the, leave everything as is without tweaking it.
The, changing the levels. Okay.
I'm, I'm suggesting, this is just my opinion, and at a certain point, we'll have to take a vote here and see what the majority lands on. I'm saying, let's leave these numbers where they are. This was also kind of approved and recommended by the city council, who we spent a lot of time working on this with, and let's wait and see what happens. I hear all the perspectives on both sides, but again, I feel like absent any actual housing projects, we don't really know. That's the one thing we all know, is that we don't really know. And I feel like, to my eye, it's, this is a good enough starting point, given all the time that's gotten into getting us to this point. Anybody else have any other perspectives they'd like to share on this? Peter?
I'll just say, I, I agree. We need to see what really happens in the next few years. We could approach that by having inclusionary zoning or by not having inclusionary zoning. Either one would be an experiment to see what happens.
And David, just to clarify from the staff perspective, we need to take a show of hands or do, this needs to be a formal vote because we're making a recommendation of the city council, correct?
Yeah, we need a motion, a second, and a vote.
Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to ask staff one more clarification.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
The recent project that's occurred in Valley West Apartments, I believe, how many units is that?
I.
I'm talking about the one kind of in the, let's see, south of the shopping center.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know the one you're talking about. I, I don't have the unit count on that.
Is it over 30 or?
But I, I believe it was over 30.
Okay, so it would have been subject to this.
It would have been subject to this and so, you know, one of the units would have been either low or very low income and then three of the units would have been moderate income, which, you know, based on our, you know, preliminary work on the moderate income program, it appears that that moderate income threshold would set rents at market rate. So it's, it's just a way to make sure that you don't have, again, luxury housing that, you know, excludes market rate housing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a point on that because it seems like when we talk about a 30-unit or higher apartment building, would you say that generally those units converge on market rate? Because it seems that folks with higher purchasing power tend to opt for single-family homes in this community and that seems to, at least at the current levels, that might just be organically happening, right? That larger, buildings with larger units are offering moderate income.
I'm sorry, are you asking if most of the development is moderate income?
Yeah, would you say that's typical? Because from what I've seen of rents, it seems fairly typical.
Yeah, so if you were to look at the income categories in our regional housing needs allocation, I would say the vast majority of development in the, in the city that is not subsidized is in the moderate income category. And those were at market rates.
Yeah, I'll just say that, yes, you know, a young professional person would probably want a single-family home, but boy, they're pretty expensive in Arcata now. And there are very few available. So, you know, having a, a nice three-bedroom unit that's part of an apartment complex, I think it would be attractive to like a young professor at Cal Poly.
I'd like to just weigh in on that, too. There's a, a lot of people my age up that are tired of their houses, that are tired of living in the country, tired of living on the fringes of Arcata, that would love to live in something attractive in the downtown area. And it just doesn't exist. You know, if we, if somebody built something that maybe it was above moderate income, maybe it was condos, you know, that were a little bit upscale, I think they would be very popular with a lot of people that are just aging out of their houses.
Well, so I, I agree that there's a need for the kind of housing you guys are talking about. I think one of the goals of the inclusionary zoning is that that would be available, at least some of it would be available to all our cadence. And I, and I think, again, I think we've set our requirements low enough that if one of the 30 units has to be very low income, it hopefully doesn't kill an entire project. But that at least we're not saying, okay, this new apartment complex is only for the wealthiest of cadence, right? We're trying to keep it diverse.
I would love to hear a motion to maybe either adopt as written or a motion that maybe incorporates some of the concerns we've heard this evening. Does anyone like to make a motion? Pat?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as written.
Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
We have a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll go down as an opposed.
Yeah. Nay. Abby?
Aye.
I think that's five, too. Okay. I appreciate that. That concludes our public hearing item this evening. We will move on to correspondence and communications since we have no business items. Do we have any correspondence from planning commissioners this evening? How about correspondence from staff? David?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.